All right, we're gonna get started with the Temecula City Council meeting for April 9th, Chaplain Michael Gregory of the Temecula Camp of Gideon's International will do the invocation, and I'll do the flag salute, so please stand.
I pray in the powerful name of Jesus Christ for our Temecula City Council, for our community of parents, and for the innocence of children, as well as the Supreme Court and other high offices in these United States, to receive the wisdom of God, to act in obedience to that wisdom, and declare policies in the good righteousness of your will and holy name, Lord. This is done, Father God, so you may continue to bless the city as you have done so, as you have done to the Christian ranchers and forefathers long before us who established this outpost here in the Temecula Valley. We call and pray to break down any strongholds the evil one has set up in man's false police of the new age, for a little bit of leaven raises the dough in our sin that makes one perish. For those who don't know you, they shall lose a reward and never earn your abandonment into the abyss. Though seeing they do not see, though hearing they do not hear or understand, in them is fulfilled the prophecy of Isaiah. You will be ever hearing but never understanding; you will be ever seeing but never perceiving. Let these city councils and our school districts be purified with the perception of the almighty God in every elected official's heart, Lord. It is only because of your Son, Father Abba, that gives us a merciful way out of our mistakes, and we bless you greatly for that. Therefore let loose the power of the Holy Spirit in this governing body, Lord; let these officials reject the false wisdom of a perverse generation, rebuke all evil that wants to kill, steal, and destroy. Instead we pray to keep your holy commandments that saves the human race and souls to govern well. This is so we can forever live to walk beside you, Lord, in the righteousness all the long days of our mortal lives. We in fact pray this also in the tradition of the American colonial forefathers who anointed by your providence established this nation in your name, and to be continually blessed by your only begotten Son, the King of kings, the Lord of lords, Jesus Christ Almighty, amen. In the year of our Lord Anno Domeni, April 9th, 2024. Amen.
All right, so please join me in saluting our flag of this great country. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can I have a row call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Potem Calvis.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here. All right, so now we have some presentations, so we're gonna start with the proclamation for Arbor Day. So, Mr. Fox, if you could come forward, and Madam City Clerk, would you read the proclamation as I go down?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to read the proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Mayor James Stewart, on behalf of the City of Temecula hereby proclaim April 26, 2024, to be Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees, woodlands, and urban forests, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you. As we all know, Arbor Day is a day to celebrate planting and upkeep and preservation of trees in our community. The city takes care of over 30,000 trees in our inventoryed in our community today. Our urban forest is improving our air quality, conserving energy, collecting stormwater, and has many social and economic benefits. To celebrate this, this year on Saturday, April 20th, we'll be having our fifth annual Earth Day Arbor Day event at Sam Hicks Monument Park from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We'll have a ceremonial tree planting, we'll have DJ, kids' arts and crafts, and we'll have informational booths and local businesses such as Southern California Edison and Mariposa Tree Service. So, this proclamation and Arbor Day celebration is one of our four overarching standards as being recognized as a Tree City USA, recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation. This Tree City USA is a national recognition program for communities with sound urban forest management practices. Our city Tree USA currently is pending approval. I'd hope to have that to bring that tonight to announce that we were awarded, but currently it is being under review by the state for approval, and it will be our second recognition as Tree City USA.
So here's the proclamation, and I'm sure she wants a photo, so turn around. All right, thanks, Stacy. And our next...
Mayor Stewart, do you mind if I just say a quick something? Stacy, I just wanna say, I just wanna thank you for all the work you do, from like the Tree Remember's Program that we have, to the Street Trees Program, planting trees in neighborhoods in people's yards. I think you're doing a lot, so it's not just in our parks, it's in our entire community, and I can't thank you enough, you and your team enough, what you do for our community with respect to trees.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
All right, next proclamation is Innovation Week.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it is Innovation Month, and we have Mary Cervantes here with a business owner as well. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the City of Temecula works for its business community by progressively providing the highest quality of life in an environment where businesses can thrive, and whereas Temecula and Riverside County have become a hub of innovation, technology, and entrepreneurial activities that need to be highlighted throughout California, and whereas the City of Temecula acknowledges the value of encouraging innovation and supporting entrepreneurs, and does such via through the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, and whereas the City of Temecula recognizes the value of creating an entrepreneurial ecosystem that supports the transfer of innovation, technology, and ideas, and whereas Temecula appreciates its partnership with the Riverside County Office of Economic Development, the Small Business Development Center, and the Economic Development Coalition to help make Temecula a place for innovation and entrepreneurship. Now therefore, you, Mayor James Stewart, on behalf of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 to be Innovation Month in the City of Temecula, and encourage all residents to continue encouraging the growth and expansion of innovation, technology, and entrepreneurship in our community and in our region.
Take her away, Mary.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council, happy Innovation Month. It is my pleasure to be here this evening. I'm Mary Cervantes, and I'm the TV2 manager here for the city. The TV2 or the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange is a regional entrepreneurial resource center and business incubator that serves as a hub for innovators, early-stage companies, and established businesses by offering professional technical assistance services, mentorship, resources, training, and office space. While we celebrate innovation all year round, April Innovation Month is dedicated to fostering creativity, exploration, and progress in our community and beyond. From groundbreaking startups to established businesses, Innovation Month highlights the collaborative spirit and dedication to progress that defines our region. Through a series of events, workshops, and networking opportunities, this month-long celebration fosters connections, sparks new ideas, and inspires individuals to push the boundaries of what's possible. I encourage the community to head over to the TV2 website at temeculaca.gov/tve2 to see what activities we have going on throughout the month of April. And joining me tonight is Mr. Fred Ladu Parisa with Exum 2020 Group, who's a resource partner located at the TV2. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to him to share the valuable services he offers at the center and an exciting new event that we're collaborating on coming up in May.
Thank you very much, Mary, Mayor Stewart, city council members. Delighted to be here tonight, and congratulations on the innovation for April. But I'm here more focusing on the World Trade Week, which kicks off on the month of May, it's a proclamation by the President of the United States, and I'll just briefly quote what he said last year, and he'll be also talking about a global trade is a key part of making that dream a reality. Well, certainly, Temecula has the dream, and it's gonna be kicking off the World Trade Week on the 30th Annual. This goes back to 1994. Been working very closely with City Manager Adams with his team, and it's a collaboration effort that we started. It really started back in 1926 by the L.A. Chamber of Commerce back then. Of course, I was not around, but I was around in 1994, and Temecula plays an integral part in World Trade Week. Just to educate those of you, 95%, 95% of the markets are outside, and just to kinda give you some of the speakers that's going to be on May the 10th is your very own here in Temecula is Paulson Manufacturer. And so, they are an integral part on global trade, and May 10th is the 30th Annual, and I'm honored and delighted to collaborate with the City of Temecula. So please register, and we're collaborating with many of the local partners, including MSJC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. And just to piggyback on that, I'm part of the Manufacturers Council here in Temecula, and it's incredible when you go to these manufacturers what we produce here in Temecula. And in fact, today we were at one facility where they do emergency speakers. So basically, when there's like a tornado alarm, they produce those alarm systems, and they actually can do voice activated, so you can program anything into this, and it goes for miles and miles. You can hear these voices for miles, and so it was fascinating, and it's produced right here in Temecula.
I just wanna add on that, Mr. Mayor, is the theme ideally, just what you're talking about, manufacturer is grown locally, expanding globally, so Temecula is not just from a city perspective, county, state, federal, but also globally, so congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's awesome. So here is the proclamation, and I'm sure she wants a photo, so you hold it. There you go. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So now we have Dante. Is Dante in there? There he is.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, next we can bring up Dante Marzett. Hello, and Jeremy Goldman, come on up. Good to see you, sir. And this is an exciting certificate of congratulations. I'll go ahead and read the certificate. The City of Temecula congratulates Dante Marzett for being selected as the 2024 Edison Scholar. The Edison Scholars Program recognizes students who want to be makers of tomorrow, the dreamers, inventors, guardians, and pioneers. This year, Edison International awarded $50,000 college scholarships to 30 high school seniors to empower them to change the world and help them follow their dreams in science, technology, engineering, or math, STEM. Dante Marzett was selected to receive the scholarship from among many high school seniors with at least accumulative 3.0 GPA. The City of Temecula congratulates Dante and wishes Dante success in his future endeavors. Congratulations, Dante.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this great honor. I am so thankful to be here today. It's definitely been a journey with all the projects I've been working on as I'm preparing to leave for college, and this scholarship is just a great blessing for me as I step into the next phase of my life. Thank you.
Awesome.
Again, I just wanted to congratulate Dante and his family and highlight the fact that there's only 30 winners across Southern California, so just a huge honor, one from Temecula, so congrats, Dante. Look forward to big things from you, so.
And I will add, Dante actually started, did you start the choir? Started a special needs choir at the church I go to, and so I got to see the choir in action, and it was, it's very touching, so he's a very worthy recipient of this, so. Here's yours. Why don't you hold this, so you can get a shot of it? There we go. And we'll go like that. Good seeing you, guys. So now we're on to board and commission.
Mr. Mayor, we actually have one homeless outreach update now as a part of the presentation.
Yes.
Thank you. So we would like to bring up Lacey Sissler, come on up, and her team, and she's going to give us an overview of what the Homeless Outreach and Prevention Program has been working on.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Stewart and fellow council members. I'm Lacey Sissler, and I manage the city's Homeless Outreach and Prevention Program, and beginning tonight, I will be providing quarterly updates to the council relating to the city's homeless outreach efforts. I have seen the profound impact that homelessness has on residents, families, businesses, and visitors to our city firsthand. After working and volunteering in the field of homeless outreach for more than 15 years, I feel especially grateful to be working for a city that has the resources and the will to address homelessness in such a comprehensive fashion. In tonight's update, we will review the key components of Temecula's Homeless Outreach and Prevention Program, and we will discuss year-to-date outcomes and highlight the invaluable contributions of our partners who play a pivotal role in the success of this program. So, before we delve into what we do, I would like to take a moment to introduce you to the dedicated team members on the ground who do it. Starting with city staff, our city staff outreach and prevention team consists of myself, Patrice Brown, Mark Martinez, and Gillian Harrington, and also we have Lieutenant Pearson up here with us right now, too, but we'll get to his team later. This team manages the city's response to homelessness and its prevention, regional collaboration, resource center operations, and coordinates the cleanup of dangerous and unhelpful encampments. Patrice, Mark, and Gillian have all grown up in the Temecula Valley and share an unwavering commitment to improving residents' quality of life. Now, moving on to SWAG, our contracted outreach providers, which we have quite a lot of them over here representing today. SWAG's mission... SWAG's mission is to advocate, educate, and inspire marginalized individuals and families in the inland empire to achieve sustainable independence through community support. SWAG team members began volunteering in our city back in 2017, the same year I started with the city, and have been our valued partners ever since. Currently, the city contracts with SWAG to provide four full-time case managers out on the street that provide outreach throughout our city, focusing on the most severe and chronic cases. Additionally, SWAG manages the operations and programming of the city's bridge housing facility called the SWAG Ranch. Next up, we have RUHS. Through a contract with the county, Riverside University Healthcare System provides a full-time mobile crisis management team to assist homeless and vulnerable residents with mental health crisis services at no cost to the city. Since our most recent homeless census revealed that 87% of those interviewed report being diagnosed with a mental health disorder, we are incredibly grateful to have these mental health experts on our team. And last, but definitely not least, we have our core team. Law enforcement support is provided by the community outreach, resources, and engagement or core team with a comprehensive approach to quality life issues. Collaborating closely with our team, deputies play a vital role in ensuring the safety and well-being of both individuals experiencing homelessness and the broader community. Their involvement underscores a holistic approach that provides compassion, support, and community engagement in addressing homelessness effectively. So these are our key team members employed by or contracted with the city. Furthermore, we're fortunate to have the additional support of nonprofit organizations within our city whose dedication further strengthens the Temecula Homeless Outreach Program, including our longtime partners Community Mission of Hope and Project Touch. And we look forward to highlighting their specific work in future updates. So we will now turn our attention to the core activities of the Temecula Homeless Outreach Program and discuss what we do. I'll now turn it over to Mark Martinez, who will share some highlights on outreach and bridge housing.
Thank you, Lacey. So the year-to-date street exits, we have 55. City outreach SWAG teams focus on hotspots throughout the city and frequent contact with clients. We also develop relationships to encourage change. This summer, we will have a locally focused census, along with next year, we will continue with our pick count for 2025. Bridge Housing offers immediate shelter operation for clients awaiting a return trip home, treatment, program connection, or permanent supportive housing. The city contacts with SWAG to operate a program called the SWAG Ranch to provide six housing beds. Year-to-date, year-to-date street exits, 19 clients have been sheltered using the Bridge Housing SWAG Ranch, and I'll pass it off to Patrice Brown.
For the mitigation update, the city provides a 72-hour notice to vacate on city and/or flood control property prior to clearing dangerous and unhealthy encampments. Any individuals staying in these encampments are offered resources and connected to services if willing. Year-to-date, 36 dangerous and unhealthy encampments were discovered and 19 were resolved. For the prevention update, the Homeless Prevention and Diversion Program provides financial assistance for rent, mortgage, and utilities to the Temecula residents that are experiencing or at risk of homelessness funded by the CDBG funds. This program year all but 95% of the awarded, 15,626, were exhausted in the first quarter. Six households and 15 individuals have been prevented from experiencing homelessness. Gillian will be next to provide our most recent event.
Thank you, Patrice. On Wednesday, April 3rd, the Riverside University Health System, RUHS Behavioral Health Team, which consists of two behavioral health specialists, one clinical therapist, and one peer support specialist, hosted a pop-up in-reach event with their mobile crisis response unit at a recent hotspot for our clients. 12 individuals attended, which was a great turnout, and the behavioral health team was able to conduct four mental health assessments. As a result of the in-reach event, SWAG was able to connect a new client to a detox program after their assessment, and I will turn it back over to Lacey.
So, in wrapping up, I hope it's clear that the Temecula Homeless Outreach Program is making a positive impact in our community. By working together with contracted outreach teams, law enforcement, nonprofit organizations, and regional partners, we're addressing homelessness in practical and effective ways, and we are committed to continuing to make a difference of the lives of those experiencing homelessness in Temecula. Thank you for your partnership and commitment to this important cause, and we are now available for any questions.
Any questions? I do have one. So when you say "street exits," could you explain what that means?
Yes. So a street exit literally means somebody who is literally homeless, living on the street, and now they are living in shelter, and it's secure. It's something that's sustainable, and there's no threat of their being back on the street unless it's their own choice.
And that also includes being reunited with family members?
Absolutely.
And so there's many ways to get off the street.
Definitely. So yes, a street exit can go straight to, like through rapid rehousing, straight into their own apartment that they will sustain themselves going forward. It can mean treatment, it can mean a housing program, or many of our people, and it's a really sustainable option, too. It means a return trip home to family.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Lacey, I believe Councilmember Alexander had a question for you.
Sorry about that.
What would you say are some of the biggest struggles that you find as your team to getting people off the streets?
Honestly, at this moment, I think the team would agree with me, probably one of our biggest struggles right now is resource resistance. It's, you know, we have the places, we have the resources, we know the paths to those street exits, and we still are facing a big challenge of just resistance with the population we're attempting to house, getting them to want to live inside, basically, or change, you know, those behaviors that will get them there.
And so what I'm seeing is, as a city, we're collectively doing everything we can, but realistically, it has to be up to the individual who wants to get off the street, is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lacey, one more thing, if we could just clarify, I believe it was 95% of those CDBG funds were expended in the first quarter.
Correct.
95%.
Yes, so we have just under $800, just under $800 left for this program year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're off to boards and commission reports. Let's go to community services and Jeff Kingsburg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Community Services Commission met last night, April 8th, and you can see on the slide our roster of commissioners for 2024. We have Commissioner Ernie Castro, Commissioner Gary Adi, to my right there in the photo, Commissioner Catherine Sizmore at the far right, and then second from the left, Dr. Juan Hawks, who is the vice chair, and then myself as the chair. And again, we review and make recommendations on topics related to the Parks and Recreation Element of the general plan and work to promote services and programs for the community. Last night at our meeting, we received public comment from the Temecula Mountain Lions Rugby Club regarding the redevelopment of rugby in the City of Temecula. We also received a presentation for the Quality of Life Master Plan website from Matt Peters, who's been visiting the various commissions, and we provided some recommendations regarding that. I also want to give a shout out to two community service staff members who presented division reports. We heard from Jared Carter, Recreation Assistant, and from Willa Augustine from the Community Outreach Division, and we appreciate those staff members keeping us up to date and informed on monthly happenings. We, of course, approved our minutes for March 11th, and we will meet again on May 13th. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Off to Traffic Safety Commission, David Maddox.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and neighbors. The Traffic Safety Commission meets on the 4th Thursday of every month to make recommendations on traffic safety education, engineering, and enforcement. At our March meeting, there were no public comments, so we approved the action minutes and moved right into the commission business. First business item was a presentation on the city's annual operating budget. So about four or five years ago, the city council started an initiative to get all the commissions involved in the budget process, and since then, Director Hennessy and her team have found ways to make that process more informative and transparent and engaging every year. This time, the Finance Department conducted an extensive survey across all the commissions, and there were two strategic priorities that rose to the top of that. One is the acquisition of Fire Station 12 just down the road in Old Town, and the other was the design and construction of Marietta Creek Bridge on the northern boundary of the uptown Jefferson redevelopment area. One result that was unique to our commission relative to the others is that we also ranked the Integrated Watershed Management Plan as a top priority, which I thought was interesting, but maybe not all that surprising given that we are an infrastructure-focused commission. Speaking of which, our second business item, we reviewed a new striping configuration for both Pachanga Parkway and Butterfield Stage Road, where each of those roads crosses the Temecula Creek. Whenever there's a pavement rehabilitation project or an extensive surface treatment, that's really the time that we have to reapply paint afterwards, so it's the perfect time to reassess those configurations and to see if we can do any... So it's the perfect time to reassess those configurations and to see if we can do anything to improve them. And we think we can, this time, by reclaiming some of the unused space in the center median and then allocating that to some buffers and to add some bike lanes in a couple of spots where we currently have a gap in the bikeway network. We're going to be applying some Bicycle Pavement Legends, which is that bright green thermoplastic paint that you have seen around town. We're also going to be upgrading the crosswalks with a new high-visibility design, going to be deploying that in a few key areas by Varell Ranch Middle School and the Butterfield Ranch Shopping Center. So our next meeting is going to be on the twenty-fifth here in City Hall. Thank you for having me, and that concludes the report.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're off to the public safety report with Captain Chris Durham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, the city team, and residents of Temecula. The month of March, your deputies responded to five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two calls for service, which is roughly a hundred and eighty-five calls a day. That leads us to a little over sixteen thousand calls for the year so far. Your deputies appreciate the support of City Council, the city team, and their residents. We've been talking a lot about e-bike safety, which has got a lot, has flooded my inbox, my email. And so I want to remind everyone that if they don't know what they're going to buy their kid, to please ask. Follow us on social media. Follow the city on social media. Go to the DMV website, and the common question I'm being asked right now is, can I detune the e-motorcycle? Can I put it in a lower setting to make it safe to ride on the roads? And the answer is no, you can't. I'm sorry. But let us know if we can be of any service, and that ends my report. Are there any questions?
No, I'll just piggyback on that, because I've noticed an uptick in e-motocycles out there. And, you know, these are young kids, usually fourteen, fifteen, popping wheelies, going through major intersections, and super, super unsafe. And we had a near fatality a month ago, and it's going to happen again because parents aren't being responsible and giving their kid basically a loaded gun, and they're going to get themselves killed. And, you know, there's, there's really not a lot we can do except for keep warning parents, make sure you know what you're buying your kid, because an e-motorcycle is illegal to be driven on the streets anywhere. So, there we go. All right. So, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have, I think, six or seven public comments here. Each speaker has up to three minutes. This is for non-agendized items. And the first speaker is Mark Swerengen, to be followed by Neil Schellander.
Good evening, Temecula residents, city council members, mayor, city staff. Thank you again for letting me speak for three minutes. I'm basically here to just publicly inform folks on my issue that I've been trying to get done for the last probably six weeks with the city, is to try to get some movement on allocation of city soccer fields. And now I'm trying to tell people some of the problems I've had with getting time with the city council. There's really, every city council member, Mr. Kalphus met with me today, Ms. Alexander, Mr. Stewart has met with me, so, and the Community Services District has met with me. But there is one city council member that I went on the public record to know, that I'm emailing him right now, again, for multiple dozens of times, Mr. Schwank, trying to get you to meet with me. And I wanted to share with you, since I know you're taking some of the public dole for your job, and so I wanted to share with you what I knew from the military was called dereliction of duty. So the shameful failure to fulfill one's obligations. I've sent dozens of emails to you, and I'm just asking for a Y E S, an N O, or a maybe. So I don't understand why all the other city council members that are taking their pay and serving their constituents can reply, but you cannot reply to me. So I looked into your, your background, and I'm thinking, well, what could it be? Is it me? You're a D E I guy that I can see, according to your background. So I'm just letting you know, I'm an immigrant. I'm a, I'm here for you. I could be your colored person that you would like to, to use for your whatever, but come on. Answer my emails. Do your job. Get rid of this dereliction of duty, and I want to meet with you regarding public safety issues. You jumped in on my meeting with Mr. Stewart, but that's not what I was looking for. I was looking for a meeting for somebody who's representing District One as a member of District Five, who took the bait to not have a fifth council member so you could have more power. And then you just don't do your job, which is to meet with the, the people of the districts that are not being served. So, please, Mr. Schwank, that's a fact, Jack. Let's get this done. Thank you.
The next speaker is Neil Schellander, to be followed by Allison Willetts.
Good evening. My name is Neil Schellander, the business representative for Teamsters 911, the proud representative for the city's classified employees. We are here today to express our support for Temecula City Manager Aaron Adams, his executive team, and the Temecula way. Temecula is a great city in which to live and work, in large part because of its incredibly, it is incredibly well-run throughout the entire organization. Not only does Temecula depend on its staff to make it shine, forty-five percent of those staff members live in this great city. They have a vested interest as residents, residents and as voters to ensure the city continues to be run effectively and with honesty and integrity. To correct any misconception, the city council is the only entity that can approve cost of, approve cost of living increases, which is exactly what the council did recently pursuant to the city's current contract with Teamsters. The employees are grateful for the unanimous support shown by council in implementing this contractually mandated, mandated cost of living increase. However, we can't ignore the fact these same workers incurred the risk of receiving a COLA of zero percent over four years, depending on the uncertain state of the economy when the contract was executed. I work with agencies that are fundamentally broken. The parties are required to endure as many as thirty or more bargaining sessions just to reach an agreement. Our historical bargaining history with, with Temecula proves that the same labor piece is accomplished with fewer but more productive meetings. Our current contract, which runs through June of 2026, is the most recent example of that. Teamsters has a collaborative rapport with the city's labor relations team built on trust and transparency, which is unsurpassed by any other agency in the region. In a time when other agencies are losing talent and burning precious resources mitigating structural budget deficits, political distraction, or other internal dysfunction, our work with the city has continued professionally and efficiently. Mutually beneficial, beneficial contract terms like these, like ours, are not possible without the professional management and effective labor relationship maintained by the city. Teamsters 911 acknowledges the hard work of the city's staff and continuing to develop the productive labor relationship 911 has built with the city of Temecula over the decades. Thank you for your time. Again, we are here to show our support to our city manager and his executive team. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next speaker is Allison Willetts, to be followed by Jim and Janice Richardson.
Hello. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and speak here tonight. My name is Allison Willetts. I know many of you from my work with Community Mission of Hope, but tonight I am here with the Interfaith Council of, some of the members of the Interfaith Council of Marietta and Temecula Valley. The Interfaith Council promotes interfaith dialogue and cooperation to serve our community. We are a group of people with diverse religions, spiritual expressions, and various traditions. We promote enduring interfaith cooperation towards ending religiously motivated prejudice and help create an equitable society. The IFC is a body of faith-based, community representatives, and individuals open to all who seek to unite in mutual support, study, and dialogue, and action. We acknowledge the God-given dignity and equality of all people, share respect and compassion for all, regardless of beliefs, race, gender, age, abilities. We embrace and seek to be a collective spirit, spiritual voice for human rights for all and justice for all. And tonight, we would like to invite the city council and our entire community to our upcoming event, the Night of Music. This year, our theme is Songs for Peace and Unity. And we have a variety of fun things happening, local talent, such as, we have Sherri Williams, who is one of our local jazz sensations, and we have local faith communities who will be coming together, like, such as Hope Lutheran with their Bells of Hope, and we have the LDS Youth Choir as well. And we would love for each of you to join us that night, or at least to help us promote this event, which is really to bring our community together with music. And so we wanted to come and invite you to that this evening. It is a free event. It's Sunday, April twenty-eighth. It's going to be hosted by Rancho Community Church this year, which is down on Temecula Parkway. We are doing a fundraiser also for the Red Cross during this event, and we would love to have you and everyone in our city join us. From six to eight on April twenty-eighth. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Allison, I have the flyers. We'll distribute them to council afterwards. The next speakers are Jim and Janice Richardson, to be followed by Beth, I'm not sure about the last name, Soltias, and Mo Middleton. So Jim and Janice.
Hello, Mayor Stewart and city council members. My name's Janice Richardson. This is my lovely husband, Jim Richardson. You may know him from the Traffic Commission. We are here to promote our event on the same day, April twenty-eighth. Our event is called the Wine Country Wiener Fest at Mount Palomar Winery, and it's from eleven to four. And it's a free event. There's going to be dachshund races, a Big Fifty-Fifty drawing, raffle baskets, galore, food vendors. We're going to have all different kinds of vendors, pet-friendly vendors, all different kinds, twenty-four in all. And the gates open early at nine AM, and Palomar will be serving breakfast to, to those who come early, if you want to get in on the vendors as they set up and see what they have to offer. The event starts at eleven, and the races actually start at twelve-thirty. And we have four different heats for races. We have the seniors, the puppy races, the mixed breed, and the
Adult Open.
Adult Open. So all in all, it takes a, a lot of energy. Jim runs the races, and I do the raffle, and it's a lot of work, and, but we just love it. And we've been doing it for fourteen years, and we're very proud of, proud of our event. And we've raised over ten thousand dollars for the rescues that we're supporting, which is Dachshund and Friends Rescue, Dream Team Angels, they're located in San Bernardino, and Dachshund Rescue and Placement Incorporated. As you may know, there's a lot, a lot of dogs that need to be adopted, and the shelters are really, really having a hard time. So what we do is we try to support the rescues that, that take the dogs out of the shelters and try to give them foster homes. So it's a, it's a big event, and there's a lot of people and dogs in need that could really use your support, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. See y'all there.
Yes.
The next speaker is Beth with Animal Friends of the Valley, to be followed by Desiree Ferraro.
Good evening, mayors, council members, and city staff and community members. My name is Beth Soltiziak, and I am the Director of Development for Animal Friends of the Valleys, Mrs. Mo Middleton, our Executive Director and Chief of Animal Control. And we're here tonight just to first say thank you so much for your continued support throughout the years. We are thrilled to be getting our reinvestment grant and all, also our community service grants. And with that, we are going to be, we're kicking off today as we speak, free spay and neuters and microchipping for the month of April and May for all Temecula city members. So it's going to be, it's free. You sign up online, or if you want to come into the shelter, which is in Wildemar, to come and get your free microchip for your pet.
First of all, I want to thank the city of Temecula for loving our pets and supporting the pet population that you have here in your city. As animal control, as you know, I get to deal with most of those. But again, I would like to thank the city for what you guys do for your pets. This is a big deal. For the money that you guys have donated, again, you know, we just opened our spay and neuter clinic. We now open to the, the public, and we have the voucher program through the city of Temecula, so your constituents can get in there. We know the only way to stop shelter euthanasia is to spay our way out of it, and we've opened that clinic, and that's our intention. So again, I'd like to thank the city especially for, for taking care of your animal population. So thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is, I think it's Desiree Ferraro, and to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Okay. So I'm actually here on behalf of Assemblywoman Kate Sanchez. So thank you, mayor, city council members, and everyone here for allowing me to actually invite everyone, and especially parents and students, high school students, because on behalf of the assemblywoman, we're going to be helping out with a driver safety education program. It's called Smart, Start Smart. The CHP actually teaches the class, and Temecula School District has decided to host it at one of their schools, Day Middle School. And basically, it's a two-hour class on Tuesday, April twenty-third. The assembly member will be there, and we're, we're just really excited to make sure that we can participate in the community. It was wonderful hearing all these other community events, and to be part of that is a great privilege. I want to also let you know that the CHP is going to be handing out a certificate at the end for those who attend, and the parents are going to be happy about that because there's a good chance that with that certificate, they could get help with their auto insurance. I think that's about it, unless anybody, oh, it is free to attend, by the way. So unless anyone has any questions, thank you for allowing me.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by the last public speaker on non-agendized items, Melissa Burbinas.
Hi. All right. So my name's Laurel Lamont. I represent upward community in the local economic workforce. It is my work to find solutions to housing our local economic workforce and, right here, right here, not there, right here. Figuring out how local municipalities can include the local economic workforce within our community, so we're not just servants, but we're part of the community. Right now, within the last two minutes and thirty seconds, I'd like to talk about RDAs and city staff, and how city staff decides that we spent RDAs. It is my understanding that city council determines how well we spent these monies based on city staff's advice. At the last Ready Commission, Jennifer Hennessy suggested that city staff spend these monies wisely. And I'd like to address or ask the city council to look into how we spent these monies. I understand at the last city council meeting, we voted down a, a subcommittee to look into city staff's past discretions or not, not doing things accurately. RDAs were a tool the state provided to local municipalities to create more affordable housing. What did Temecula do specifically with that money? What did we do? Without city staff giving you the answer, do you know how we spent that money? Do you know who received that money? Do you know where that money went and who benefited most from that money? Because it would appear to me that we built up an old town with that money. And developers benefited far more than the residents or the tenants. We didn't take that money and create housing within the master-planned communities. And right now, we like to claim that we're landlocked. What are we going to do? We don't have any more land left. Well, we had plenty of land when we had RDAs. How do we learn from our mistakes? The city staff can get some things right and also get some things wrong. Can city council, is city council capable of looking and questioning city staff's agenda? Are you capable of doing that? Because we elected you and not city staff. If you are not ornamental, and you are going to do the work, please tell me, how did we spend RDAs?
The next speaker is Melissa Bourbenais, to be followed by the last speaker, Hanan Rickard.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bourbenais. I am here with Upward Community. I want to talk about housing and representation. One-fifth, as it stands right now, one-fifth of Temecula's constituents are unrepresented. Nobody's sitting there. In theory, the four of you represent District 5. But I can attest to, as can Mark, that in addition to one person not representing one-fifth of Temecula's constituents, which is taxation without representation, once upon a time, we cared about that. But Councilmember Schwank, you only represent the constituents that you like. That's it. You don't respond to us, you don't respond to Laurel, who is directly in your district, you don't respond to the affordable housing tenants that reach out to you for assistance. They already are petrified to reach out, because God forbid they lose their housing, something I know you don't understand. I know this council, who largely acts as if this is an elite country club, doesn't understand. You are privileged. Point blank, you are privileged. It's okay, you don't have to apologize. I'm privileged as well. Embrace it, but represent all constituents, not just the ones that you like. The workforce, particularly lower-wage earners, Councilmember Schwank, need your guidance, need information, need to know that the Housing Authority apparently is who they are supposed to go to to resolve grievances, when they are being arguably abused, mistreated, laws are being broken, and they're told barely after about a week to go to Housing Authority. They need to know that. When have you discussed it? You discuss dogs and e-bikes, you discuss proclamations and dogs with special needs, you discuss all those things. I hear you every single Tuesday when you hold council. That's what matters to you. That's who you represent, Jesus. Animals, innovation. Again, this isn't a country club. It's not your private business that you own. You need to represent all 110 constituents, including the ones that are poor, including the ones you don't like. To be continued.
The last speaker is Hanan Rickard.
See if I can get that, my hand's shaking. I just came across this comment, and I think it kind of brings out my point I want to continue with from last time I spoke. Has to do with men in the, I want to say women's, but even girls locker rooms in the gym. And I think it's like the elephant in the living room that we all know in our conscience, but we're too afraid to say anything or really press on it. Kind of just want to go with the trend that everybody's going with, but we don't really want to go against. And I just want to remind you where we came from. We came from oppression, and we had some brave men that were willing to die for freedom. And I just want to encourage you all to pray and ask God to, first of all, give you understanding and then wisdom, and then also encourage my council on how to best do your job, which is, it's a big responsibility. I don't take it lightly. I know. You don't or shouldn't. But I just want to encourage you to do the right thing and ask God to reveal to you so you'll know for sure that you're doing the right thing, and you'll know that you're doing it for God, you're not even doing it for, you're doing it for the vulnerable, but also ultimately you're doing it for God, because God cares for the vulnerable more than you and I ever could. Yeah, I guess this nation was also, one more thing I want to bring out is, we need to deal with the root problem. I know you guys support a lot of proclamations and so forth. I'm still trying to understand all that. But I think it's good for us to maybe try to deal with the root problem, which is people need, we need God, and we need a relationship with God, the Creator of life, Sustainer of life, the promoter of true holy love, which correlates with nature. Where our spirits are satisfied with the Spirit of God, so we don't have to go and try to fill that void with drugs or homosexuality or other vices that we're vulnerable to adapt to, because we're trying to satisfy that void that only God can fill. And so, I would try to support maybe doing some type of Christian outreach that reaches out to people and promote the gospel of Jesus Christ. God bless.
All right. So we're on to city council reports. So do we have any city council reports? Mr. Schwank?
Chair, Mr. Mayor, I can start off. I don't have any slides for this, but this is just, I'm going to report out a little bit on some of the external work that we do. Obviously, council, you know, this isn't all we do. So we do regional work. I'm on Riverside Transit Agency, and I'm also serve on SCAG. I was elected by the residents of Temecula, Marietta, and Menifee. At our last meeting, we adopted SoCal Connect, the 2024 Plan, and it's essentially this long-term transportation plan. And I just wanted to share out that it was a unanimous vote, a lot of staff time, a lot of time and energy went into creating this, and it's really a blueprint for transportation for our future. At RTA, this last meeting, one of the items we had was an opportunity to use some cap-and-trade grant money, some low-carbon transit operation planning money. And we're going to be offering, so this is for Riverside Transit Agency, so it serves families and people here in Temecula, 25-cent rides, our summer promotion offered on fixed routes and go microbuses from June 1st through August 31st, 2024. And then, kind of the big one for that day was free fares for youth ages 18 and under for a full year. So that'll be for the balance of 2024 and then on into middle of '25. We're also offering free rides on certain days. Election Day is one of them, which I thought was really cool. We had about 600 boardings on Election Day, so people took RTA transit to the polls to return their ballots on Election Day within Riverside County, so that was pretty cool. So this is kind of what we do externally. I'm going to, you know, kind of speak a little bit about, you know, some of the comments that we hear, especially the last little bit. You know, it's really easy to come with an item, right? And have one singular focus on an item. And it's a little bit more difficult being up here, and I've been on that side. I've come with an item and trying to use a big hammer and trying to bash my way through council, and it's quite difficult. I think that we hear a lot of misinformation, we hear a lot of, you know, stretching of truths. In fact, I take meetings often, in fact, I return emails. But I've never made it personal. And, you know, I heard something last meeting was like, "I really dislike you." And it was, it's like becoming personal. "I just look at your ideas." I look at if we have, whether it's youth sports or whether it's housing, I look at, who are we serving? If we have 7,500 children served in recognized youth leagues and hundreds more in rental leagues, and we have someone that comes and makes a comment with a singular focus, I don't know that that system's broken. I think we're serving our students, our kids and our families well with that. I did take a meeting. You were there, Mayor Stewart, and we talked about a lot of things. On the housing front, I don't know how you can realistically look at what we're doing in the city, and sure, there's always room for criticism, but to say that we're not doing anything, when you can look at the $5, $6 million on a project, and that effectively buys down someone's rent. So rather than paying market rate, that person's paying $1,000 a month, or half essentially. And that's significant, that impacts families. I understand, you know, if folks are, you know, earning a little bit more, that's problematic, but we have a fiduciary duty to hold to those amounts. And that's just kind of how this system works with affordable housing. The Harvesting Plan was not even residential, and we added residential. We're adding units, and this is a supply-demand issue. This is a pure supply issue. If you look at the number of units that were down statewide, and depending on what article you read, and, you know, there's, you know, a vast number, there's a huge gap in numbers. We're down. The City of Temecula is doing a considerable amount with respect to housing. I think some of the attention drawn to affordable housing is actually negatively impacting some of the sentiment in the community, and I've heard it. I've heard it from people down here in Old Town, and just in the community as well. And when you start to talk about pure dollars that the city spends on affordable housing, some people start to question that. And I'm super interested to see, you know, how we sort of go forward with funding more affordable housing. I'm a supporter of affordable housing. I work with Habitat for Humanity, and I will continue to do so. I've lobbied on their behalf in Sacramento, and I will continue to do so. So a lot of what we're hearing is frustrating, and understanding that the things we say up here, they end up getting clipped and put in videos and, you know, like trying to draw attention to it. But I don't know how you can genuinely look around the city and not think that the City of Temecula is doing work in a vast array of spaces. Things aren't broken. We can always work to get better, and I think, you know, you have that commitment from city council members to continue to work, to continue to do what we think is right for the whole city. And if you have a singularly focused issue, I have a problem with getting beat over the head over and over and over with it, and you won't take my meeting, and you never respond. And the fact is, you know, I have an obligation to be up here, to do the work, to take meetings, but it is about collaborating. And if you're going to come to a meeting with a big hammer and try to break things up and destroy it, it's going to be really hard to move forward and try to be collaborative. So, you know, we'll continue to take it on the chin up here, three minutes every single other week, and that's just kind of how this process works. But I think for the folks that are here that know me, for the folks that are in the community that know me, they know who I am, and a lot of the things that are said up here are just not true. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Alexander.
All right, I just have two items that I just wanted to share this evening. If you can put the first slide up for me, whichever one that is. All right, so I had the privilege to head down to our new committee, the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, on March 28th, and I just want to just thank all of the board members that are, all of the committee members that are on there. They just did such an excellent job on their first day. There was a lot of information that came from staff, from Luke, who did an excellent job as well. And I'm just very proud of this group. I got to listen to all their ideas that they want to bring forward, and they have a lot of great things that they want to make better within Old Town. And I think we just have a diverse group, and I say that in the sense that there's a lot of different types of, I mean, we have store owners, we have people who live down there. So there's just a lot of different ideas and different perspectives, which I'm really appreciative of. So again, I'm looking forward to keeping an eye on this committee and also just seeing what the public is wanting to do down in Old Town. So I just, I'm very excited about this committee. So great job, hats off to you guys. The next one, please. All right, the next one, I had an opportunity this week as well to go speak at the Mothers Against Drunk Driving, and also they added on really anybody who's dealing with drugs as well, so if you're driving under the influence as well. So they were an incredible group out there. It was a 5K fundraiser. The city was out there supporting them, the Sheriff's Department, CHP. It was wonderful to see all the families. I was able to go out last year, and they're just really trying to get the word out, not only to kids, but just people in the community about the effects of drunk driving for everybody in general, and how this just makes an impact on not just that family, but the entire community. And so I am in full support of this organization, and I hope that they continue to grow and just allow their message to get out there, so that way we can save the lives of youth because of the, in all actuality, well, just everybody, but in all actuality, these types of accidents can be completely prevented if somebody does not get behind the wheel intoxicated. So again, hats off to them, great job. It was a beautiful day, little chilly in the morning, but it was beautiful. So I'm looking forward to another year, next year, and I just hope and pray that it expands for the following year. So thank you again, and that's my report.
All right, thank you. All right, so Innovation Month, I've got a Cruisin' with Stu video to explain a little bit more about the EV2. So please roll.
Hello, Mayor.
Come cruise with me. What is the TVE2?
So the TVE2 is the Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, which is, it's a city-owned, regional entrepreneurial resource center and business incubator. So we've had over 30 businesses graduate from the Business Incubator Program, and we currently have 15 businesses located at the TVE2.
So the Business Incubator, we serve early-stage startup companies by offering private office space. So what you see here in the background are open-air workstations, and in the perimeter of the room, we have nine private offices. All of these business tenants have access to our mentorship, technical assistance, and training services offered through our Entrepreneurial Resource Center.
This is the workshop space, and I've been here many times for a lot of activities that involve the youth of Temecula and inspiring them to careers that they may or may not have even thought of.
We host over 200 training events every year, business and workforce-related for the business community, but we also host a lot of youth programs in partnership with TCSD's Workforce Department. But we also host a lot of youth programs in partnership with TCSD's Workforce Department, career pathway programs, youth innovation, things of that nature, all in the areas of business startup, business expansion, funding, human resources, anything you can think of related to business or workforce and youth business we offer in this class.
Now, that's the cool part about Temecula is we're not only looking for employers, we're creating employers. So where now?
So I also wanted to share that in January, we launched our brand-new Entrepreneurial Resource Center, which is located on the second floor of the TVE2. So let's go up there, and I'll show you around.
Let's do it. So here we are with Carla, who is the Assistant Director for the Small Business Development Center.
Yes, thank you for having me today. So the ERC, Entrepreneur Resource Center, was brought about by the County of Riverside Economic Development, City of Temecula, and also Inland Empire Center for Entrepreneurship over at Cal State San Bernardino. And the goal is to create a community for our entrepreneurs, get assistance with resources, trainees, and get technical assistance to help their business either start, grow, or expand. So we're not just seeing pre-venture, but we're also seeing established businesses looking to grow their business and scale it up as well.
So this is kind of like a triage center?
Correct.
Where, you know, we create businesses downstairs, and then when they get started and they not quite sure where to go, they come upstairs and get further help?
Correct.
Well, thank you, Mary, for showing us this very valuable resource to the City of Temecula and our local businesses.
Of course, thank you for stopping in.
Appreciate it, thank you. And thank you for Cruisin' with Stu. All right, so that is, believe it or not, one of the few, I don't even know how many we actually, how many exist in Riverside County, but it's one, yeah, one or two at the most. So it's very cool that Temecula's at the forefront of trying to create local jobs that people can actually stay here in Temecula and work and live. Next, we have the Sunset Market, which is tomorrow night. And I believe we have a slide, yes? And it's supposed to be a beautiful night. So if you're not feeling like cooking on a Wednesday night, come down to the Sunset Market. There'd be plenty of eats you can buy and enjoy just an open-air market. That's really cool, so. And next, we have a slide on what we're doing with Habitat for Humanity. So we actually have five single-family homes right now, but six more in the pipeline that the city has invested $600,000 in land contribution and additional funding to make these six homes happen for Habitat, which allows that first-time homeownership for people who need affordable housing. So that, to me, is a really cool, a cool thing that we're doing. And just to kind of piggyback on what the ladies there said about the RDAs, the RDAs were dissolved before I even got on city council. So, you know, we all up here, we kind of are stuck with the aftermath of what the RDAs created. And honestly, the RDAs created a lot of affordable housing. And I think the previous councils were creating a mindset to have people live and work right here in Old Town, which is why they bought down the rent on these buildings and created second-story apartments above all of these commercial buildings to create that live-work experience. But like Zach was saying, the money really doesn't go to the investor to build their building. It goes to buy down the rent so they, when they go for their loan, they can actually make it pencil out. So you can play semantics either way, but the Vine Creek on the other side, that was, that's strictly all affordable housing. And then in Uptown Jefferson, that's all strictly affordable housing. And even over off of Margarita and Temecula Parkway, that project down there, Modera Vista, that's all affordable housing. So we have it spread out all over the city. It's not just in one specific area. Although it can look like that, but it is spread out around the city. But we are doing what we can with what we have. And you got to remember, we are in the late stages of our city development and redevelopment. And so we're doing the best we can with what we have. And I just wanted to say that. So thank you, and we're off to Consent Calendar. Number one, wave reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of March 26, 2024. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, adopt ordinance number 2024-2, amending sections 10 dot 24 dot 040 and 12 dot 04 dash 050 of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding the use of e-bikes on sidewalks and within public parks, second reading. Number five, approve Second Amendment to the agreement with the State of California Department of General Services for Office of Administrative Hearing Services. Number six, approve Second Reading of the agreement with Gillis and Puchepin? Architects, Inc., for on-call architectural services. Number seven, approve the contract documents and authorize the solicitation of construction bids for pavement rehab program citywide, PW 23-19. And that's it. I will accept a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
I clicked yes.
And that passes 4-0. I will now, what do you call it? Convene?
Recede.
Recede, there we go. I will recess the Temecula City Council in favor of the Temecula Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll convene the Temecula Community Services District Meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here. Do we have any comments on non-agenda items for this night's meeting?
We do. Mr. President, we have one comment on non-agendized items, Mr. Mark Swanger.
All right, welcome. You have three minutes.
You're wrong. It's six minutes you're going to have to deal with me, sir.
Five.
This is consent, three minutes?
Yes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, you bet. Hey, I just want folks to know I'm here to discuss my ongoing issue with the athletic fields, soccer fields in Temecula, specifically at Bird's Hall and Somers Band. And one reason why I specifically brought out Mr. Schwank's presence and tried to get a meeting with him via abusive means, I would say, is because you are the head of the, you're the president of the Community Services District. So if I want to get something done in terms of public safety with the Bird's Hall Park, it's got to go through you. If I want to get something done, it's got to go through you. Because I have no complaints about Ms. Russo, Mr. Calphys, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Alexander, or any of the city staff. It's just you, because you will not answer an email. You won't answer an email. So looking at what needs to be done, I'm looking at the Athletic Field Reservation and Use Document that you might have looked at back in October and approved, but I don't think that you've read. But really, the solutions that I'm trying to get done can be all found in this document. But you need to adhere to it and apply things from this document into the allocation of fields. So really, I'm just looking for someone to do what they say in here is allocate by the number of Temecula residents participating in a recognized league divided by the number of fields. So whoever has the most residents gets the most field allocations. That's what's applied to TVSA, the nice organization that we recognized a few weeks ago. But we could apply this to other tiers of the field allocation. But, you know, I can't get an audience with the president of the Community Services District, and the city staff is not going to listen to anybody until the president of the Community Services District does his damn job, all right? So don't get on your high horse with me and start saying that, hey, you got a big hammer. I'm a little Asian guy. I'm a little, I don't have a big hammer that's going to be coming down on you. I'm just some guy that's trying to get some stuff done. I'm trying to provide solutions, and I provide solutions. But you told me my concerns were miniscule. You did that right there. And that's why I'm going to be here for, I guess, eternity, because you're not going to answer an email. You won't answer an email because of your hubris. You could get me out of here. I won't have to come on Tuesdays anymore if you would take an email, take a meeting.
Do you have any more speakers?
We have none.
All right, thanks so much. All right, we have one item on our Consent Calendar this evening. It's item number eight, approve action minutes of March 26, 2024. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. All right, and that passes 4-0. Thanks, everyone. Do we have a director's report this evening?
Nothing from me this evening.
Okay, general manager, anything?
Nothing further.
All right, board of directors, anything? All right, I just, actually, I do have a quick slide that I'm going to throw up. So if we could, if we could go ahead and throw up the slide. We've got a couple, I'm sure everyone saw this in their mailbox today. We got ours actually today as well. So the new Summer Fall Guide to Leisure Activities has come out. Registration begins Monday, April 19th. There's a lot in this book. Super proud of our Parks and Recreation staff and for everything they do in the community. So good time to be in the city. All right, next slide. And then I wanted to highlight our next Culture Day for Saudi Arabia. It's Saturday, April 13th, from 11 to 1:00. And that's down at the Temecula Valley Museum. Free refreshments, there's a live camel presentation, crafts, free arts class, and more. And this is an all-ages event. So hope to see everyone there. Thank you so much. All right, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting and turn it back over to the mayor.
And I will reconvene the Temecula Public Finance Authority. Madam City Clerk, please note we're all still here. Are there any public comments? All right, so we'll go on to the Consent Calendar, which is approve action minutes of March 26, 2024. And number 10, adopt ordinance number TPFA 2024-02, levying special taxes within community facilities districts number 23-01, Altair, second reading. And that's that. I'll accept a motion.
Move to approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 4-0. Do we have an executive director report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Anything from the board of directors? Nothing, I will adjourn. And I will come back to the Temecula City Council meeting. And item number 11, which is consider City Council Protocol Manual, Policies Relating to the Council Manager Form of Government and the Use of Staff Time at the Request of Council Members Alexander and Schwank. Can I have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, for the record, we do have public comments, two public comments on this item.
Fair enough. Would you like staff report first?
Staff report first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. At the last city council meeting of March 26, council members Schwank and Alexander requested we bring back two city council adopted policies for discussion. I would mention that both of these policies are included in the City Council Protocol Manual, approved to form by this city council, and both of these represent longstanding tradition with the City of Temecula. The first policy I will cover is the Council Manager Form of Government. This is the most common type of governance structure among cities in the United States. You all should have a hard copy in front of you, and copies were also attached to the staff report as well. Under this form of government, next slide, please. Under this form of government, residents elect a governing body, that is, the city council, to adopt legislation and set policy. The governing body then hires a manager or administrator with broad executive authority to carry out those policies and oversee the local government's day-to-day operations. This structure is very similar to that of a corporation in the private sector whereby a board of directors sets forth policy and a chief executive officer implements such policy. This form of government recognizes the critical role of elected officials and that of the manager. It also recognizes the distinction and roles between the two. The role of elected officials as policymakers is to focus on mapping out a collective vision for the community and establishing the policies that govern it. This form of government is also codified in Government Code Section 34851 in California, as well as in the Temecula Municipal Code, Section 2.12, which outlines the duties, powers, and responsibilities of a city manager in relation to their service to the city. I'll stop there and available to answer any questions or just allow the city council to have a conversation about the first policy.
Any questions before we go to public comments? Okay, let's have the public comments now.
The first public commenter is Melissa Bourbonnet, to be followed by Laurel Lamont. And this is a business item, so you have up to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bourbonnet. I am here on behalf of Upward Community, and I would like to comment on Agenda Item Number 11 and make a recommendation on behalf of Upward Community and the local workforce that this include a discussion or some changes that would allocate use of staff time to the issue, the comprehensive issue of housing. This is not a single issue, Councilmember Schwank. This is a comprehensive issue that affects the entire city, 110,000 residents and the workforce that has to commute out of the city to go, to spend an hour and a half on the freeway to have a roof over their head. It's not a single issue, and it's not a small thing either. There's a place for proclamations in a city within a representative government. There's a place for trees and parks and dogs with special needs. There's a place for that. But there also is a place for housing, a discussion and action steps toward solutions. And Mayor Stewart, there are solutions. We understand what happened to the redevelopment agencies, and we understand that they happened before you were here. We know our history, and we don't come up here and give false information, Councilmember Schwank. There is not a person sitting in there. That means one-fifth of Temecula is not represented. Look up your emails. Tell me the last time you responded to my email, Laurel's email, or the emails of the tenants at Warehouse that are in your district. Tell me. I understand we don't like each other, but I don't come up here and give misinformation. The solution, if you will take the time and energy to invest in learning the solution to a crisis that you still seem to neglect to acknowledge, as I've mentioned, if you don't acknowledge the severity of the housing crisis, then how do we start working on solutions? But I don't care whether you acknowledge it, because it's well-established, to include WRCOG. I'm going to quote off of their legislative platform, off of their website as of today, that WRCOG acknowledges California faces a significant housing shortage spurred by a mounting supply shortage. They also go on to say, recognizing the acute impact that the housing crisis has on Western Riverside County. The acute, that's severe. The acute impact that the housing crisis has on Western Riverside County. So we can talk about dogs, and we can pass proclamations, but we need to discuss housing today, today, and not just telling me what you did 10 years ago. Not just telling me how you were able to buy a house 10 years ago, 100 years ago. I don't care. And the workforce- And the workforce doesn't care. They need to be housed today. Bree needs to be housed. Cory needs to be housed. Laurel Lamont's son can't even get a job. Do you know why he can't get a job? A young man can't get a job, can't work toward a car, an e-bike. Do you know why? Because if he gets a job, he gets kicked out. His mom gets kicked out. They're homeless. That matters, and that's not a single issue. Our COG has identified it's a severe issue for Western Riverside County. The state of California has identified it. Everybody in the country understands it. You are in a position to make some changes. You are in a position to do some good things for the workforce. Please read or listen to the audiobook of Arbitrary Lines, M. Nolan Gray, Arbitrary Lines, N. M. Nolan Gray. As he points out, zoning is not a good institution gone bad. Zoning is a mechanism of exclusion designed to inflate property values, slow the pace of new development, segregate cities by race and class. This is what zoning has done. That's irrefutable. Read the book, study it, start discussing solutions.
The last speaker is Laurel Lamont.
City staff, that's what this agenda item is referencing, right? City staff and the protocol to use city staff. I'm going to piggyback on what Melissa just said. What is city staff's agenda? Because in 2020, you had the opportunity to rezone the Harvest Inn specific plan to include affordable housing. You don't get to negate that zoning. City staff advises and impacts zoning, the planning department. If we have limited, or if city council has limited opportunity to use city staff to do the homework, are you going to do the homework? Because the only council member I've seen up here do the homework is Calphus. Zach, you have been up here, can you tell me one thing you've done? You've done, not city staff has done, but an idea you've had? What have you brought to the table? I know you plant trees. I know you hold meetings on occasion where you sympathize. What have you done? You sit on a lot of boards. What do you bring to those boards? You went to the Sacramento with Habitat for Humanity. I'd like to think I had a part in that, because he had never gone before. City staff has an agenda, but we elected city council. Housing is not a single issue, and if you design a city to exclude the workforce from living within it, then of course your city looks pretty to you, because you're not a part of that local economic workforce. We can't participate in those little flyers that you send out every year because we don't have access to those community amenities. Like, I'm up here, Zach, right here. I know you don't want to look at me, but I'm here.
Mr. Mayor, these comments aren't even related to the item.
I feel like they are.
Point of order, they're not related to the item.
City staff and how you use their hours and their time. How are you using it? How are they allowing you to use it? Are they misleading you? Are you subscribing to everything they say? Are you going to do your own homework? 10 years. I've been digging into how we can figure out how to include the workforce within this community for 10 years, and we bring solutions and you shut them down, but you aren't creating any new ideas. City staff is not coming up with any new ideas. We fought to get things into the housing element. What have you done with that? What are you doing with that? You told me that city council was the decision makers, and that I wasn't to address city staff. I was to address you. Well, I'm addressing you. You don't want to look at me. You don't want to talk to me. Let's do the work. Let's entertain the idea that maybe, maybe there's more you can do. Don't just shut it down because I agitate you, because I rub you wrong. I really do value most of you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all of the public comments we have on this item. And the city manager does have a secondary portion to her's presentation.
Okay, let's hear the secondary.
Before I do, was there, was there any questions or comments about the first policy? Or does the council want to discuss the first policy? Because we haven't got to the second one yet.
I mean, I, I think it's probably easier if we discuss this one and kind of move this. I know it was kind of awkward having to take public comments in between there, but I would feel more comfortable if we just discussed this one and then moved on. I don't know, certainly defer to you if you want to lead out and...
No, let's handle this policy first, and then we can go to number two.
Okay, so we have the policy in front of us, and adding this and asking for the friendly amendment last meeting to have this included was really just a way for us to reaffirm everything that's in this policy. And I think if we don't have, if we collectively and individually don't have an understanding of how the council manager form of government works, that just creates issues. So I wanted us to go through this, and I wanted us to read the policy, even though, you know, we adopted it last year. But I wanted us to look through this, and there's some things that I want us to at least, we're not going to vote on this, but I want us to at least acknowledge, do we all agree to these things? Is this, you know, do we agree to, you know, the fact that the city manager is the, the day-to-day operator? That's one of the things that's important to me. Us setting policy and adopt legislation and to set policy, that's our role. And for us to try to micromanage the city manager just creates an environment that's, it's just problematic. And I think so, you know, looking at this document, I'd really like to hear an affirmative from the balance of the council that they agree that this is the, the way we want to move forward. Along with that, in our municipal code, section 2.12.080, there's a whole section on the city manager, and one of that section is relations with council. And I'm just going to read some excerpts from it. It says, "The city council and its members shall deal with the administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for the purposes of inquiry, and neither the city council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinate of the city manager." And it goes on to talk about, you know, what that means, inquiry, and it says, "Such staff members shall provide all the information reasonably requested to any council member, and the city manager shall take orders and instructions from the city council only when sitting in a duly convened meeting of the city council, and no individual council member shall give any orders or instructions to the city manager." And for me, this includes emails. This is, this includes, you know, text messages. This includes just passing conversation. The, the, this is a big issue for me, and I'm really struggling with where we're going. If an email comes in and, and we're bypassing the city manager or even the director, and we're going to staff, if we're communicating with like a, like a mid-level staffer versus the director or the city manager, I have a problem with that. We need to be working directly with the city manager, and in some instances, the director is perfectly acceptable to do so. I'll, I'll have conversations with the city clerk or even with TCSD regularly because of those roles that we have, and I think that's acceptable. But I really wanted us to highlight, we need to be working through the city manager. It is how this body needs to function, and the staff that was here tonight that showed up, that's how they need to function. They, they need that to be the, the, the line in the sand, if you will, that we're working through the city manager, they're working for the city manager and for the city. And I really want us to get back to that. And, and I think adding this item tonight is a way for us to all read it, and we can all agree to it, so that in two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks, or tomorrow, we all have an understanding of what it means to be in this role, and then how we work with the city manager and through the city manager to bring about the goals that we have as individuals and then collectively as a council. So I would just ask that, you know, part of this discussion is everyone at least acknowledges this, and they're comfortable with what's written here and accepting of this council manager form of government. Ms. Alexander, you're good with that?
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I think there's, there's some belief, I believe, that some people don't understand that the city manager really is the boots on the ground, and we are, we are literally the, the policymakers here. We're not, we're not the management tool to make it all happen. We, we come up with the ideas, or we come up with the policies and direction, and then we hand it off to him, and he takes care of it. And, and for us to come in and micromanage after the fact, it's, it's not our role. You know, if we want to, I mean, i- if it comes down to accountability, if that's something, you know, a, a city councilman is looking for, then that's something they can ask for. But it's, it's not our role to get involved with that part of city government, in my opinion. So if we're good with that policy, then we're good with that policy.
Are you good with it?
Good.
Yeah, I believe we adopted, I believe Councilwoman Alexander and myself were on the subcommittee that I was, helped create the protocol manual, and I am very familiar with it. I am good with it, the same as I was good with it when we approved it last year.
All right, so second half.
All right, before I begin, Councilmember Alexander, you emailed me this morning asking to table the secondary policy. So before getting ahead of you, is this something that collectively you guys want?
I spoke to the city attorney earlier, and I'd like to table it, but I'm just going to push ahead and just move forward. That's fine. We'll get it taken care of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second policy relates to requests for staff time at, and at the request of a singular council member. This policy has been in place for nearly two decades and is really designed to make sure myself and my team are being as efficient as possible in how we spend our time for gathering requested information and/or doing research. This is also designed to ultimately protect the taxpayer, that our time is being spent wisely on items the majority of the city council has directed me and made a priority. The policy states, generally, communications with staff should occur during normal business hours. Generally, responses to inquiries and questions should be expected within the next business day. Council members may contact executive directors directly for routine information that is generally available to the public. Routine information requests that can be fulfilled within a short time will, of course, be provided as soon as practical, i.e. the status of a resident request, legislation, project timing, copy of existing documents, et cetera. Staff will treat all city council members the same and advise the city manager of the information that was provided. Nonroutine requests are those that exceed four hours or one-half of a regular business day, as determined by the city manager to compile, research, and prepare a response. Nonroutine requests require a majority of the city council. Nonroutine requests may be placed on the agenda by the city manager under the consent calendar or business section of the agenda to obtain such approval. Responses to nonroutine requests will be distributed to the full city council via written notification or as future agenda item as determined by the city manager. The city manager may bring any item to the full city council for consideration irrespective of time constraints. The city manager may perform work in response to an individual request based on overall time and resource allocation. This may include legal work. Lastly, the policy describes the protocols for council member requests for meetings with staff, directing the city council member to work through the CM and/or the relevant department head as appropriate. This concludes my report, and is recommended that city council consider the two policies as requested, discussed, and provide any staff the direction you desire.
Okay, kick it off?
Yep.
Okay. So it seems like this, this thing keeps coming back over and over as far as what this looks like, and I'm going to get into that. This, I believe, was brought up years ago with another council, and initially there was five years, or five hours given to, to city, or to us as city council. And here we are again, probably the second or third time that it's been brought down. So the reason I bring this up is because from the last agenda item that I had put on the, on the agenda, I had a discussion with our city manager. And I had asked for some information pertaining to some ordinances, resolutions, things basically that are quick to be able to be received by the staff. For me, it might take me several hours, because I might not know where to look, but staff, it's very easy for them, or a lot easier. And at the time, I was told that I had already been, I've already used my four hours. But the thing is, is I didn't allocate anything just yet, and then I was, I was explained by our city manager that there was over 100 man-hours used already. And I said, yeah, but I didn't direct that. Even though this is my agenda item, there are things that I need to be able to help bring forward some information to you guys, so that way we can make a sound decision. So when we talked about that a little further, Aaron Adams had discussed with me that this seems to be an issue that with other council members as well, and so maybe we should bring this up to the, for discussion here at the dais. So that's one of the reasons I brought this up. And there are some concerns that I would really maybe think that maybe we need to hash out and talk about, and I'm just hoping this is, today is going to be a discussion that it's just going to, we're really going to be able to dig into this and maybe hopefully get a finalized copy, or, you know, finalized agenda item here. But I do have a couple of concerns. So number one, as I'm reading this, it says, "City council members are limited to four hours." But as I continue to read this a little deeper, we're not limited to four hours. What we're limited to is the city manager saying that we may bring this forward, and that's going to be found, and these are for nonroutine requests. So this isn't for ordinances or resolutions or anything like that. These are, I would assume, for things such as stats, stats, maybe new stats, things like that, that maybe the staff needs to dig in a little bit more. So it's up to the city manager whether or not he wants to bring it forward, and then we're only allocated those four hours. But the problem that I'm having is, is as a resident, if I do a PRA request, I have a lot more time and allocation to the information that I need. So maybe we need to change this policy and add a little bit more time to that, because if I'm asking for this information, as a resident, I'm allowed to get it, but as a council member who is elected, none of us can receive over that time. And that's kind of a concern of mine. So that's number one. The other thing is, is just looking at the fact that we as a body decided that, you know, we, we came as a whole that we are not going to push forward as a subcommittee, which, that's fine, that's what we decided. I had noticed that there were over 100 hours of staff time allocated to something that didn't even move forward. And I understand- And I understand that Aaron is doing his job to protect the city. That's his job. We do the same thing as council members to protect the residents as well as the, the city. But I would also like to have the discussion is to, before a subcommittee is created or before we move forward with an agenda item, I believe we need to be able to put into place some type of boundaries to be able to not exceed a certain amount of time as well for staff. Because I don't even know how much time was spent. And so as council members, we all got a hundred hours' worth of information, but maybe I needed another hour or two to be able to get more clarification on an item. So I just think that that could be a, a problem for, for some of us in the future. And so I'd just like to have that discussion as to see how we can better utilize staff's time, better utilize the time that we are given and that we are needing to be able to move forward for our citizens here that are needing, that we're representing. So each one of us right now are representing one quarter. And we need to continue to represent that one quarter, whether or not everybody else likes that or not, but we are representing them. So that's kind of what I'd like to talk about a little bit today. And if there's anything else, I'd love to hear from my council members.
Mr. Kelfus?
Yeah, a few things. I just want to clarify and confirm that routine requests that require less than four hours do not have to go through the majority of the council. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
And I think that's important. I think it's important that one council member doesn't take up a majority of staff time. I mean, we can look into, I suppose, maybe more allotted time, more than the four hours. But I think it's important that, that one council member doesn't take up a majority of staff time at any given time, especially if the majority of the council doesn't, doesn't want the staff to look into whatever the one council member's looking into or, or don't believe that that request warrants more allotted time. So I think, I think it is important that there is a definite time amount on there. But I, I suppose I'd be open to look, to thinking about more time allotted to a single council member's request. And possibly for clarity, if, if it was a written request. So instead of us thinking that we, it could be a lack of communication too between us and, and the management. Possibly if, if we ask for something and we think that we're being very specific in our request and that request is misunderstood. Again, that could totally be just a miscommunication on the council member's part, on the staff's part. So maybe it's just a more, better communication between us and staff. But maybe for clarity, we, we have a written request policy where if it's just a, a very routine request, we just say, hey, this is the specific request that I'm asking for. If it goes outside the scope of greater than four hours, then it has to come before council, obviously. But if it's less than four hours, then it's a very specific request. That way there's no ambiguity on that request between council and staff and, and we move forward that way. But I think there's always a way to, to better our communication with each other. And, and I think maybe going through this is a good thing. And maybe in the past, it hasn't been, been very clear. And after tonight, it'll be more clear and we can move forward and all work together in our relationships and, and build those relationships and move forward with respect and, and clarity.
Councilmember Schwank?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I, I do think this is an important topic to discuss. And, and Councilmember Alexander, we had, I felt like a very productive conversation earlier today regarding this. You know, like the routine requests are just, you know, and I'll just use the example for, for me yesterday. There was, I had some issues with the traffic control plan at Inez and Rancho Highlands, which is essentially a duck pond entrance and how it was working. And, and I sent in a, a message asking Aaron to look into it. And, and he did. And he got back at the end of the day and was like, hey, this is what's going on. And it, it satisfied me. That's like a routine request. And it took, you know, a, a few minutes, an hour, whatever, to, for staff to get back and, and look into the issue. And so those routine requests are just, just the day-to-day stuff that we all send in, right? Like we're all curious about something or we get an email and I forward an email, you know, about a, a property or a homeless encampment or something. So you're always kind of doing that routine request for stuff. And that's normal. The nonroutine request is, is really what we're talking about. And, and it is getting to a point where, you know, you do have a monopolization of time, of staff time. And I'm certainly open to, to, you know, you know, say, we could say eight hours, you know, instead of four hours. I think when you look at this, you know, our city manager wasn't like at five hours saying no. He, he went to a hundred hours and said, okay, well, let's go back to council and get some direction. Because, you know, we, we've done a lot of research. So knowing our city manager and, and the work ethic that he has, even if, even if we move it to eight hours, I still believe that every council member's gonna get a little bit of latitude. They're gonna, we're gonna do our homework. And maybe there's something that is a blind spot for us that it, it's important that we know before that item and it exceeds the time. And, and I think that's maybe what we saw with the fee schedule, where we spend some time with the city attorney and, and it ate into some of your hours. I think leaving, so Councilmember Alexander, you mentioned, you know, not sort of directing or giving, you know, you didn't allocate any time. I, I do think it's important to leave that discretion with the city manager. I think when we have this discussion up here, there can be some parameters, obviously. But I, but I don't know that, you know, whether it's written or oral communication saying, I want you to look into this, or I want you to look into that, and that should only count to my time. I, I, I think you have that leeway a little bit, but I don't know that we wanna sort of hold each council member to that, right? Like, well, I want you to only look into this and that should count for my time. Because again, we have some, some blind spots that need to be covered by the professional staff here. I think the fundamental thing for me is this, this agenda setting process is a, is really a two-step process. The first step, most often, everyone gets a thumbs up. So that first night, I could say tonight, I said, I want the city of Temecula to make the San Diego Padres the official baseball team of the city. And you would all maybe, if you're a Dodgers fan, maybe you'd thumbs it down. But most of you would probably say, oh, let's, you know, okay, let's see, right? That next meeting is about, is what we're talking about. And I think too much emphasis is put on, on, on let's just research and then dive into it and solve every problem versus just coming up with a best case to convince your colleagues that the San Diego Padres should be the, the only baseball team allowed in the city of Temecula. Like I need to convince you that, right? And so I think once you get to that step where you've convinced the balance of the council, then this time constraint goes away. You've created an, an, a subcommittee or you've created a mechanism for the city manager to essentially use mostly unlimited time to then implement my, my devious plot to make the San Diego Padres the only baseball team in Temecula. So like I think if you can separate it out and, and, and if you look at, not trying to come up with every means to solve the problem at that second meeting, but just, I just need to win over my colleagues. I need to convince them. I need to, I need to articulate it in a way. And, and I felt like when we were talking earlier today, you, I felt like, and I even said, it's like you articulated your position very well and, and it, it made sense. And I think that's what we do here to get to that step. Or then as a body, I can buy in and we can all buy in. And then we can direct the city manager and we can direct, then he can direct staff, the relevant staff to go and do the work and then we can move through it. So I really think keeping a, a smaller set of hours is important. And, and I also shared this with you. I said, there, there's times where, where I feel just individually like I am not getting the time that maybe I need on some things that are already in the CIP. There are tier-one CIP projects that are like ready to go. And those are things that, that I wanna drive. But we're kind of chasing some things where we're, you know, spending hundreds of hours on an item when we don't even, we shouldn't be doing that, is basically what I'm saying. And so I'd really like us to get back to, not that we shouldn't bring stuff forward. We should always bring stuff forward if we want to. But using that space to go, hey, eight hours, if you wanna go eight hours, I'm fine with that. Eight hours on this item so that you're prepared to make the case with us. But a hundred hours is, is too much time. And I think, I think we just need to sort of understand that it is a two-step process. And, and that second, that second step where you're gonna have, you know, four to eight hours worth of time, it should be plenty. It should be enough for us to be like, okay, this makes sense. And it likely won't always, right? Like we'll, we'll likely not always feel that way. But it should be enough time to make it make sense for us to be like, okay, let's, let's figure this out. And then we can do a subcommittee or make a proclamation making the Padres the official team of the city, whatever it is. So that's, but I'm fine if you wanna move it, if, you know, collectively if we wanna move it up to eight hours. But I just think fundamentally, we need to understand this, what that process is and how it should work.
Yeah, and I'll go next because I, I totally agree that we need to keep a lid on this because we can't, we can't allow these little side items to take over the staff's time. And I think the expectation of us on their time is so much different than their time reality. And so where if he gets a, a message from you, look into this, he's calling Jennifer to find out the financial implication. Then he's calling Peter to find out the legal implication. Then he's calling Luke to find out what's the community. So, so there's so many pieces to this pie that what we think in our head, it's only an hour. It's like, no, it's an hour times 12 people that he's just charged. We're looking into this situation. So, so that's, that's where I see it could, it could turn into a total quagmire. No matter how many hours we put on it, it's not gonna be enough for the person who, who wants to see that agenda item. I think it, it really should be behooved on the person who's pushing this item to come up with, with very minimal staff time. You should be able to convince us that we agree with you to move this thing forward. I, I, I don't think you can put a high enough number on the staff time to make staff get you the answer you're looking for to move your agenda item. So, and not just you, it could be anybody. I mean, it literally could be any one of us who comes up with something we wanna see. So, but there's four of us and five one day. And so it's, it's important for us to have buy-in into whatever the one wants. And that's why the, the four-hour thing is, to me, if you wanna go to eight, I don't care. But, 'cause like I said, staff could burn through that in, in one conversation with 12 different staff members. 'Cause all those are hours towards that item.
Right.
So, so I'm, I'm okay if you wanna go to eight. But I really think on a future agenda item, it really should be the person who's moving the item that does the homework, that, that is able to be convincing enough to the rest of us that this is important for our city, not just for you, not just for me, but for the citizens of Temecula. And so, so that's my opinion. But go ahead. I know you gotta follow.
Oh, no, it was, no, and, and I think we're all in agreeance. It sounds, at least for the most part, that the eight hours would be good. I know we need a cap on this. I mean,
Yeah.
A, a city would be stupid not to have something there because I think, you know, previously there was one council member who went nuts. And that's why this policy, I think, was initially put in place. So a hundred percent in agreeance with that. I do believe that, Stu, if I can just mention for what, you know, just what you're saying is, somebody like me, for instance, right? Maybe I'm not as updated or I need to be more in the know. And so that's kind of sometimes why I need staff to teach me things. I need to say, hey, I don't know where to find this. Can you get this for me so I can read through this document? Because I wasn't here six, seven, 10 years ago, you know? And so I don't always have that ability to look back. So I need staff to help me with that in order to make a, an educated and wise, I don't wanna call it an argument, but a, a way to say, hey, we need to bring this forward and this is why. Because if I don't do my research, I, I do a lot of my own research, but sometimes I need help, you know? And it's not like we can really lean on each other. So I need staff for that. And I think that's why they're there, is to be able to use that. But one of the things that I, I was able to speak with Councilmember Schwank about was, and yes, that was a great conversation that we had earlier. I, I don't see us, we shouldn't be spending a hundred-plus hours when we don't even know something's gonna go forward. So my question is, is how can we allow the city manager to do his job but yet not go over a certain amount of time? Because the fact of the matter is, it was never created, right? So how do we move forward to be able to minimize the expense on the, on the taxpayers' dollars to, for us to be good stewards of that money? So that's, I think, part of that next question is, is as we are limited as well, we wanna be good stewards. So can we also put some type of restriction? Because realistically, that hundred hours just kind of went out the window since we didn't push it forward. So I think this is just a great example. I'm glad we went through last week. It was a great, a, a deeper understanding for us to be able to move forward and have this discussion. So what's your guys' opinion, I guess, as a board entirely?
Well, I think, you know, in, in that instance, we're talking, you know, what you were, you know, trying to form that committee. Would you have been satisfied with the city manager saying, your time is up. Sorry, we can't, we can't do anymore for you?
But I was told that.
Yeah, I know. But that was after a long time. I mean,
No, but I had it, but I, I'm, and I literally looked through all of my documentations and my emails because that's one of, and that's another thing. I don't know who said it. I think it might have been Kelfus or Schwank to have, I think it was Kelfus. I think if we have any request, it needs to be written. And I, I know I've been trying to really get into that and not just bring it to Aaron. He's got so much on his plate as it is. So I think that needs to be something that's written down, that needs to be sent via email, not text message. Keep it professional. But at the same time, yeah, I think, I don't believe that I, at all, that I went through, when I went through all my emails, that that would've been four hours. Now, I could be mistaken, but that's again why we wanna bring this to maybe in eight hours, which I think, you know, it sounds like we're all collectively on top of that. So, so yeah, so the question is, is, you know, how do we wanna manage, as we are managers of the city? Because we are the collective body, to make sure that that money is allocated correctly and timewise. I don't know if Zach, I know you and I spoke earlier about it.
So, so what you're asking is to give the city manager the authority to shut down the conversation with the city council person who is pushing an agenda item? 'Cause, 'cause that's essentially what you're asking?
No, no. The way I see it is, no, listen, hold on, hold on. Maybe I'm just not explaining myself well enough and I'm sorry.
All right.
If I have an item and I need, let's say, six documents,
Right.
eight documents, maybe each one takes an hour. And I allocate that because I need that to be prepared for my next meeting. I feel that that is okay. That's what's needed for that council member to be prepared to have that conversation amongst the four of us. But to go outside that scope to bring more information, is that to you guys? Is that to me? Maybe I don't need that information? Maybe that's something that's not pertaining to what I'm needing to bring forward?
I guess, I guess where I struggle is our perception of time is different than staff's perception of time. Because like you said, when, when you're asking for a particular item, Aaron's not looking up that item. He's, he's asking Randy to look up that item and Jennifer to give an opinion on that item. And so, so instantly, your time is gone in, in one question. So when you say, I have eight items, and it's like, we barely made it through one item in eight hours.
Absolutely.
So,
No, I, no, I mean, items meaning ordinances and things. Because if I, as a resident, I can do a PRA request
Sure.
and get that same information, and that might be the same amount of time. You see what I'm saying? It's, it's like a catch-22. So if I, if I go fill out a PRA request to do it, why can't I, as a council member, just ask for the same information? That just, that sounds kind of, do you see, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, 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 no, I, I see what you're saying. But at the same token, you gotta give the city manager then the latitude to shut you down.
Oh, at, at eight hours, absolutely. Well, that's what we're agreeing to. That's what we're talking about.
Okay, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that.
Yeah.
Because I would totally jump on that.
Well, but then again, my question to that also is, is as a council member and as a board member, a quarter of this, and we are to oversee staff. My question is, is how can we know what time is allocated? So I'd like to know, you know, what, how long, I mean, are we, are we gonna get that? That's, that's where we're gonna, are we gonna get nitpicky?
Right.
I don't wanna go down that route.
Right.
Right? So, and I know that things can, if, if something needs to happen, Aaron pushes it through or whatnot. But I mean, we're talking about, I needed some ordinances. I don't think that that was that challenging to put into.
Well, I think, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I think individually, what you're saying is like, well, this was just this, you know, a few pieces of paper, right? But collectively, it was a hundred hours' worth of asks. But collectively, it was 100 hours worth of asks. There was a lot, and you, you may not have asked for each individual item, but collectively, trying to come to council for this item that you wanted exceeded that. So, I think, at, at least what I'm hearing is, you know, eight hours is, has to be a hard stop. And, and I think during the time where you're trying to get the buy-in from the council, you have an opportunity to sort of put the guardrails on what you're looking for, right? So, I'm sure you could email it in later, but I think that discussion, that, that time that's allotted for this is the perfect time for you to say, these are the things I want. Because that's what I need to form my argument to win you over. So, I need demographic data on the number of Padre fans, and I need demographic data on the number of Dodger fans. And I need to understand, you know, like, I would, I would articulate that. This is what I'm looking for to get this item on the agenda. So that the three of you are like, yeah, that's a pretty good idea. And so I think if you can, if we can kind of pull, pull away and not worry so much about, you know, the individual requests, but it, look at it in totality. And we, what we're trying to mitigate is the amount of time that staff spends chasing items that one council member wants to do without the consensus of everyone. If you get everyone's consensus, like, you can do whatever you want. And, and especially if you get on, on the subcommittee, let's say, and you're, you're having, we had a subcommittee today on the user fee item, right? So, we worked through that and we spent an hour with, you know, five staff members. So, five hours of staff time, you know? And, and so like, that's how this should work. It, it shouldn't be, you know, this, all this upfront work that, you know, you even mentioned, like, okay, well, that didn't go through. So, that 100 hours is pretty much wasted. That's, we should try to stop that. And that's really what we're trying to say. And we're, we're all kind of in, in agreeance that maybe four hours just isn't enough. And so we're saying eight hours seems reasonable, right? Eight hours is, is, is an entire day dedicated to an item. So, I, I think that's reasonable. And, and what I said earlier, I think, still stands. I think our city manager isn't gonna, he doesn't have his stopwatch on his phone and he's doing the countdown and he's adding and multiplying everything up. He's, there's going to be a little bit of leeway. There's going to be a little bit of grace to get the information that's needed. But, you know, eight hours and 100 hours, it's such a huge gap. Like, eight hours and 12 hours, okay, fine, whatever. I think we'd all be okay with that if the city manager said, you know, on this item, we actually spent a little more than eight hours. We're going to be okay with that. But if it's this 100 hours, and it, and it actually says on a business day. And I know that much of that last user fee stuff was happening on the weekends.
Yep.
And I'd really like to encourage us to only try to do stuff during the week unless it's an emergency.
And I think we do. I mean, I, I know by, by, I believe by Friday I was done. It was, you know, I try to respect their time as much as I can.
Yeah, I think that's important.
And we've had that discussion before, I think, you know, just respecting staff, letting them have their, their time, not bugging them on their phones, things like that when we don't have to. So, it, it's up to you guys. I'm just saying is, is, do we, I mean, are we okay with next time doing 100 hours? Are we, I mean?
No.
No.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I jump in on this conversation? Is it okay?
Yes.
And then I'll, I'll back out. But I think, I think I heard some things that I think are important for me to mention. In my 12 years of doing this job, this policy's been in place. I've never stopped a council member at four hours or five, never. But in the last 90 days, I've had to exercise this policy on three occasions. So, three times in 12 years. But that's only after I blew through 50, 60, 100 hours. So, I, I am trying to always find a way to yes. And we will be as responsive tomorrow as we've been today, as we were 12 years ago. And so, this last example of 100 hours, it's true, it's true. When you voted on a future agenda item, and I had two weeks to kind of, well, I had a few hours to think through with that future agenda item, that future agenda, and this is how a city manager thinks. There was a lot of things, that was a very complicated ask, that was a very legally challenging ask, and there was a lot of records that were not readily available. I made the call. As your city manager, I made the call to do a great deal of homework in advance of that hearing so you four could make an informed decision about the formation of an ad hoc. I own it, because that's what city managers do. We anticipate, if there was work to be done, I was going to do it. I commissioned that work, I commissioned RWG to provide that opinion. I had Jennifer working, I had Randy working, I had community development working, I had fire, I had building, I had myself. There was a lot of work. And yes, it wasn't all directed by the council member. But it was work that was needed in order to support the agenda item, because I want it to be prepared. So, I think, I think one of the things that's getting lost here is who's in control of the four hours? If that's what we're talking about.
Right.
If Councilmember Alexander wants to control the clock on how much time is spent, then you guys have that conversation. But as the policy's written, I have that sort of authority to determine when we've blown through four hours, 10 hours, 50, 75. And we've been very liberal because we want to support the city council. We want to get you stuff immediately, if it's available. Now, in that case, a lot of that stuff was not readily available. It was not easy. It required hours of work, talking to multiple people, consultants, technicians downstairs, research. 20 years' worth of research to find resolutions, to piece together the puzzle that we ultimately discussed, right? So, that's what we do. We want to make your job as easy as possible. Our job, my job, and I hold these guys responsible, is to prepare you all every two weeks, second and fourth Tuesday, so you can make an informed decision. That's the city manager, you entrusted me to do that. I spend as much or as little time getting ready for these business meetings. And they run smooth, generally. But you have no idea how much work is spent on a one-hour meeting. We spend hundreds of hours preparing for these meetings. That's just the nature of the business. So, I want to, I want to let you guys continue, but I've never stopped the city council at four hours. I just, I need to make that statement. We're here to serve, we're here to find you what you need, if it's readily available, you'll get it. I think over 12 years, I've proven myself, more than proven myself, so.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I think that kind of sums it up. It's like, we, we have a team around us that's going to do the work.
Yeah.
We just need to individually adhere to that and say, you know, if we, I'm totally fine making a motion to change the one line instead of four and a half, four and one-half hours over regular business day to make it eight hours. I'm totally fine doing that. But we have to respect that. And, and when you have the opportunity to articulate what you want, and then Aaron and his team are going to go back and give us what we need to make an informed decision, that just has to be reasonable. Like, I'm okay just being reasonable. 100 is not reasonable. And so, we just, and, and we need to accept that. Like, if, if the city manager came to me and is like, look, man, like, we're spending way too much time on this, you're going to have to do your own research, like, okay, I'll finish it up, I'll do what I need to do. Or, you know, just kind of let the chips fall where they may and, and let the balance of the council decide. Once you get consensus, then game on, but.
I have a quick question. I know Brendan and I see you're about to hit your button there. City manager, I do have a question, you brought up a good point. On an average, since you've been doing this for so long, how many hours typically do you see that a council member needs in order to be prepared for an agenda item?
Are we using, are we using the council future agenda item that a council member has sponsored?
Yes, so, so let's say in that in between two weeks.
So, we use, use you as an example.
And not just me, I'm just, I'm looking at an overall, because I'm not just, I'm not just taking that one specific. I'm looking at it as we are discussing future items in general. So, let's, I'm just looking at it as an overall blanket. How long and how many hours typically would you say, on an average, you need to prepare a council member and your staff in order to do the job correctly and perfectly, to excellence?
It's going to vary on the item.
Right.
Yours was a super complicated item. I think the conversation that four of you should have is, do you want to be responsible for your respective item in that first step of a two-step process? Or do you want to lean heavily on staff to help prepare you for that first step of the two-step process? Really, does that make sense?
Absolutely. So, what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is, is obviously, we need to be prepared, which I think all four of us, when we bring an item forward, we're prepared. But there's things, again, that we need to lean on staff because you guys are the experts in the field there. I don't have the expertise of all of these wonderful people. So, yeah, the question is, is really how many hours in total? I, I just keep going back to it. Are we, are we looking at just eight hours in total?
It's, I think, I think, let me, let me try to explain it. And Peter, jump in if, if I'm not getting this correct. But again, the, the council has the policy to, on any given Tuesday, you guys can bring up a future agenda item, right? So, Zach, use the example. If you guys thumb up that tonight, how much work is, does he really need to spend between tonight and two weeks to bring that item? Because that's not, that's not substantial voting that's going on. You're, he's actually bringing back the item on the, to put on the agenda for your consideration. See, that's, that's step one. And then if you guys vote it down, then there's really, there's no research, there's no staff work, there's no time spent, the taxpayer's not spending money on anything like that. But if in that, that step, you guys are like, yeah, Zach's got a great idea, go, then there's no clock. We go to work, we go into subcommittees, we got legal time unlimited, we got unlimited staff time. The majority, the council has approved the use of that, and we go. I can use Mayor Protem Calphus as an example, right? The Streets project. So, there was work that was being done, I know he was doing work on his own. We bumped up against what probably was a, a large number of staff time. You made your case, your colleagues went along with it, there was a subcommittee. How many meetings have we had? We've spent an unlimited amount of time on your agenda item. And that's the way the system, I think, is designed to work. So, my question to you guys is like, is it really our role to prepare you for that?
No.
Secondary step of a council-initiated item? Or do you, and if it is our role, then how much time and it should be in writing, you know, what does that look like?
See, to me, I believe that first step is an idea concept step. So, that should be totally on you. You should not be relying on staff for any information. Because all you're doing is presenting it to us and, and asking us to look into it deeper. That's when step two kicks in, as far as I'm concerned, then staff time. That's when your eight hours should start kicking in.
Yes.
But if, if it's, if it's kicking in before you even have the agenda item and you're asking staff to look into this or that, that's wrong. That's not something we should be paying staff to do. Because that's something that is your idea or your agenda, it's not ours. And so, and staff is here to support our agendas, not your agenda, your agenda, your agenda. So, so, eh, as far as I'm concerned, step one should not involve staff at all. It should be just you bringing the item forward, convincing us to either thumbs up or thumbs down it. And then it moves into the eight-hour category, not, not before that. If, if, a, a, and I would, I would want to give the city manager authority to shut that person down before that thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
My question is, is, for instance, I had another thing that I was bringing up with Carisolus.
Yeah.
I had several hours with staff prior to that to even see if this is even something that would be feasible for the city or even worth it.
Sure.
So, I, I had a couple of staff members come in and we listened to the presentation, does something like that account for that? It's, it's very gray, because that's what I'm seeing. So, that, this whole thing is kind of gray because there's ideas that maybe, when you and I wanted to sit with, with one of the other nonprofits.
Right.
And we had ideas, that was staff time for us to bring forward something, does that account for that? See, so, eh, we, we bring up, eh, we bring things up and utilize staff time to be able to get our information correct. Because I don't want to sound like an idiot coming up here and not knowing what I'm saying, that's, that's, that's not being wise. And so, like, there needs to be a little bit of there, you know? You need to be able to have some of staff time because you need to be able to do your homework. Where I, where I'm looking at Randy, and maybe I'm just picking you because you're looking right at me. Maybe I need her expertise in something because I don't understand something coming down from the legislation. I need her to sit down with me and, and break it down because I don't get it. That's staff time, is that included?
Yeah. How, so, along those lines, like, I think you're making the case in.
And I could be, I just, I want to make sure, I, I, you know?
Has anyone ever shut you down for a meeting with Carisolus or legislation time? Like, like, have you ever been told, you know, like, hey, we can't have this conversation, you need to go to the council so we can talk about it?
And that's what I want to make sure is, is that.
No, has that ever happened?
But that's what I'm saying, is, is before, but.
Wait, hold on, I just need to know, because it doesn't happen.
We, I just, I already said, the first time I ever got shut down was just this last time.
Right.
But I don't want us to be shut down in the future because we're like, that's your idea, you need to do your own research, you, we can't give that meeting to you. I'm just, I'm just reiterating to make sure that that is not going to occur.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
I just, just, I, I, every word has a meaning, every word means something. I want to make sure I am, we are right on where we need to, and I am fine with that, as long as we're like.
I mean, I think we're, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think we're, we're now talking about just day-to-day stuff. And, you know, you take meetings with people all the time. You know, new people come to town and they have this great idea, and we take meetings all the time with people. That's, that's routine stuff. What we're talking about is this agenda stuff where we're chasing down an item that you want to bring forward. So, it's really, I'm not worried in any way if I, if I go into the city clerk's office and then say, hey, I needed a little more information on this legislation. I, I know.
Okay, perfect.
That's not going to happen.
Awesome, no, that's good.
Same with, like, every director and the city manager, not worried about that. But if we just focus on, on this, this non-routine agenda stuff, Mayor Stewart is right that it should be that initial phase, it should be all on the individual. I, I should be able to articulate my position on something and you guys will go either like, well, that's crazy, or, oh, that's pretty cool. You know, and, and I think that's really what we need to separate out and, and just focus on that for the first one. And, and then the second one, because, because I think the way that this is working is we're spending all this time and I'm sharing the way that, that I'm feeling, that we're spending a lot of time on a couple items, right? When, when we have a lot of work to do in the city. And, and, and it's frustrating to me. So, that's not building any sort of goodwill between all of us where I'm going, wow, now we're chasing another item, or we're chasing another item. So, it's really, if we're going to do things and it, and, and we all don't have to buy in, just three of us have to buy in to, to move it. And, and, I mean, I will accept that, I, I always have, that the majority of the council wins, and that's totally fine. But I think that needs to happen for us to all be comfortable with whatever items coming forward. So, if we can just simplify, that first step is like, hey, I want to make the Padres official city, official baseball team of the city, and you guys are all thumbs up, great. The next meeting, I come back and I, and I lay out all the reasons why they should be. And then you either say, that's a great idea, or that's just the worst idea you've ever come up with, and then we move on. We don't really involve too much staff time in that. And then if it gets on the agenda, then, eh, again, like this, the city manager said, like, we have unlimited time. So, we really just need to focus on one step, two step, and then if, if it, if it lives another day, great, if it doesn't, so be it. And we just need to accept that. So, we need to say, eight hours, I'm fine doing that. And, and we just need to accept it, though. We all need to accept it and say, I've articulated to my colleagues, I'm not going to send off a bunch of emails asking for a ton of information from the city manager, I'm going to come back in two weeks totally prepared. Because as you saw, it's, I mean, two weeks isn't a lot of time to prepare for stuff. We, in the subcommittee meeting, we had a day for the user fees, knowing budget's coming up. We're like, hey, we can push this back a little bit, we don't have to come back right away. We have other important things we need to get through.
Absolutely.
And so, that's really where we should prioritize.
Mayor Protem. Well, one, it sounds like we're all pretty much on the same page with a lot of what has been said. I think the hardship that I was trying to figure out, and it finally clicked for me, is when the manager said three times in 12 years, and I think I was one of those three times when the road situation got brought up. And I think, and again, this can go back to the, and I'll take responsibility for the lack of communication. But on that specific instance, and I'll, I'll use that specific instance because that's the one I was involved in, I felt like I, I asked for a, a routine item, right? Less than four hours. And then I, I got, and they, they did way more than four hours of work, but it wasn't pertinent to the four hours that I thought I was asking, if that makes sense. So, they, they did a lot of work against the item. And then when, when I asked for more information, that's when the city manager shut me down and said, we're not putting more, any more time into this. And my, and I guess where my hardship was, was just that, and again, this could have been my lack of communication. My hardship was that I felt that, I, I guess it wasn't clear. My hardship was that I felt that, I wa, I guess it wasn't clear in what I was asking for. And then when I got information back and my time was up, that was it. So that's what caused me to make the presentation that I did, right? So I had to go out at that point, because my time was allotted. And then this, this was what drove me, I guess, you into, into my corner, because I had to have a lack of communication with staff, because my time was up. And I had to have a lack of communication with council, because of the Brown Act, so I couldn't talk to anyone. So I had to do all of this research on my own, and go out and take pictures, and and do all this research. And that's where, I guess, the, the, it became unclear to me. And I guess that, that's where the hardship was for me. And I guess it could've been that lack of communication again. But I felt that in that specific instance, and maybe similar to the fee study, where, yes, a hundred of hours was put in to maybe support the item, but the the individual council member may feel that it's a hundred hours to go against the item, if that makes sense. So it's just, it's just a hard balance. But then again, it goes back to the, the communication between ourselves and city management. And I think that, I personally would would say that I can always improve my communication. And that's why I brought up maybe the written request for clarity, just to be, there is no ambiguity in between what we're asking for. That way, we don't feel that our time was allotted in the wrong direction or anything like that. But I think we, it sounds like everyone agrees. It's just, it's just, it's a hard topic, and there's a lot of convulsion. But it sounds like we agree on the eight hours. We agree that there needs to be, you know, the council, manager, or form of government. We agree that communication is key, and we move forward.
Well, I I do wanna suggest, so if someone has a future agenda item, there's nothing in the Brown Act that doesn't say, we can't talk to one other person.
Of course.
And so I think that's something critical, because, and and I wouldn't talk to somebody who's gonna say, yes, yes, yes. I would talk to someone who, you're not quite sure where they're gonna go with this. And that's, 'cause that's kinda where the rubber's gonna hit the road. And so you wanna get buy-in from that person on a more of a personal level than throwing it up on the dais here, and then us trying to figure out where you're going with this, you know? So I I think going forward, if you have a future agenda item, it'd be great if you spent time with someone who maybe not is gonna be on your side. Pick 'em. That's the person you wanna talk to, because guess what? You need that person to push that item forward. So if you're, if you're gonna hit a roadblock with that one person, you're toast anyway. So why don't you go for that one person that you know you're gonna need to push that agenda item forward? And that'll stay, save staff a lot of time, because you're gonna, we're gonna burn a lot of hours just talking about that ourselves. And either you're gonna convince me, or not convince me, or Zach, or whoever you're talking to. So I I think, I think that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to take the load off of city staff and put it back where it belongs on us, because we're the policymakers. And if we're, if we're coming up with a policy that's gonna involve staff, staff's gonna put a hundred and fifty percent into it. And so we can't expect that eight hours to be eight hours either, you know? So it's like, so we need to know going into that thumbs up or thumbs down, if it's even a legit idea. And so that's why I think it's important for us to communicate with each other and 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 leave staff out, or, you know, once we've had a conversation, then maybe we just go to staff and say, okay, this is an item we're thinking about. Is it doable? You know, give, give a thirty-thousand-foot-level opinion on this, Aaron, and 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 just go from there. That way, at least when we get to here, we've already got a little buy-in from our city manager. We got buy-in from possibly someone who might not have had buy-in if you just said it tonight, you know? So again, it it goes back to using these four seats.
And I think we do. I I mean, I think for the most part, believe it or not, I mean, I've had conversations with everybody in here on different topics, but I can go to somebody, and they can say thumbs up on it, and right on the council, they'll say, nope. So that doesn't work all the time either.
Well, yeah.
You know, so it's, it's very challenging, and it's not always a perfect world.
Right.
But, you know, sometimes when somebody gives me a yes, and I'm working with them, then they turn around and say no to it. So I, that doesn't always work either.
Right.
So, you know?
Well, I I think that your odds are better, though.
Either way, I talk to people for the most part.
Yeah.
I would definitely have one council member that I talk to.
Yeah, well.
And Mayor, I just wanna say, be careful what you wish for. I think for the next six months, you're the, the elephant in the room that we're gonna have to persuade here.
Right.
So you're gonna get a lot of conversations, I think.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, sorry, Mayor Stewart, I appreciate you saying what you just said. As I remember last year, ha- having that same sort of conversation, as, you know, you start presiding over meetings, and you say, like, like, look, let's, if we're gonna do an item, you know, maybe start with the city manager, is what I said. And just get a professional opinion. And you you don't have to listen either way. But you can start there. And then you go to a colleague. I mean, I, look, I've been watching these meetings. I've been coming to these meetings for for many more years than I've been sent up here. And I always noticed the way that the, the council colleagues work together on stuff. And typically, items were brought by two council members. And and when I first came on, there was always that, like, I'm gonna work with you, I'm, I'm knowing I'm an individual, but I'm gonna try to build a little consensus first, and then, and then try to bring it to the full board. And I think what you'll see is, is items that, you know, not everything's gonna make it. We can sort of realize that, you know, not everything's gonna make it. But the reality is, is that builds a little more goodwill. So the process matters versus coming in and, you know, sort of throwing up on the dais, and then, you know, the bodies in the wake, left in the wake of that, is, you know, whether it's staff or council, is sort of like, well, that leaves a bad taste in my mouth, you know? So you, you're, we're always trying to, you know, manage those relationships as best we can. And so I think the process by which we do this matters a whole lot more than the actual item that's coming forward, and how maybe we individually feel about it. So, you know, maybe that's the history and traditions part of me, of like, there's norms, and kind of adhere to those, and I can get on board with a lot of things when it's presented in a way that's, you know, balanced in a, like, a historical perspective, or it has some tradition to it, or it, or it's just, it's just a decent way to do things. So I think that that there's ways to build that consensus that way, so.
I would just like to comment that I would disagree with what you said as far as if you present things in a way that you'll be more apt to vote for them. And my roads is a perfect example, because I, you voted down the request to even have the discussion on a subcommittee. So it didn't matter how I presented, if I would've been extremely nice and generous and sat up here and did it the historically correct way, or if I did it the way I did it, the answer was no. So I guess I would just disagree with you that.
You, you don't know that.
Yeah.
You don't know that, so.
You voted down to have that meeting.
But that's the whole thing. It's about, it's about the process. And it's about, again, it's about trying to build relationships. And, look, I've been around a long time, okay? I've been coming to these things. I've seen how people interact. It's not always pretty, but there's a way to do it. And if you, if you wanna sort of go down the road on your item, which we don't really have to, 'cause that's not what we're talking about here, it's really just about trying to build some relationships here and not burn it down. And I really think that matters. And so, like, you know, it it's how things happen behind the scenes, and what we see behind the scenes, and how we deal with each other behind the scenes. It also plays out here in front of the public, so. Yeah. So let's wrap this up. So.
Mr. Mayor, I really need to clarify the last discussion. So what I heard city council collectively say is that they would like to revise the existing policy for the request for information and use of staff time to go ahead on non-routine requests, ensure that those are in writing. So that's the first thing I heard. Obviously, if the city manager receives something in writing from a council member and has further questions on clarification, there could be multiple writings in the event that it's not understood as documentation or research requests. So number one is that we would like to revise the policy to include written requests for non-routines. The second piece of that is on items for future agendas. For step one, where a council member is bringing up an idea, there will be no staff time expended on that idea. For step number two, when that item is actually placed on the agenda for the first time, there will be up to eight hours expended on that time. Once the full council has acted on that item, like, sent it to subcommittee or whatever, there's an unlimited amount of time that can be spent on it. That is what I heard through that discussion. Am I missing anything?
No, I think that's good.
Good.
Okay. So we will be bringing back a revised policy on the consent calendar for two weeks from now. And if the council wishes to pull it off for further discussion, that's fine. But I will be working with the city manager and the city attorney to confirm that these three or four changes that you wish to have are in the policy. And with that, we will need a motion to approve.
And that passes four-zero.